For pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted in person and as a courtesy via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Please note, while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is provided as a courtesy to the public and board members, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless it's required by law. The meeting will be broadcast live in real time via the government access channels, Verizon 39 or Comcast 9, and you can watch it at pactv.org/duxbury. All right. So we had a continued matter, which is ZBA case number 2023-20, which is 12 Sammaset Road, that was on for a previous night, but we didn't have a quorum that night either, and therefore was not heard and was never opened, right? So I'm going to ask the applicant, do they want to open this thing and proceed at least partially tonight or fully tonight? You could proceed tonight and have us reserve judgment until we get a fifth person, who then would have to watch the tape of tonight. Or do they just want to kick this to the 25th? Anybody here for 12?
Do you think he's on the wall?
Oh, there we go.
Yes. So do I understand there's no quorum? Is that correct?
Yeah, we have four, we have four, but not five.
Well, I'd prefer to sort of cover it now and then, you know, go from there. I mean, that's what I would prefer.
Okay. And just to be clear, in order, if we were to go forward, hear the thing and then close the hearing, you would need all four people to vote affirmatively in order to get the special permit.
Okay.
All right. So, all right, let's open it.
I mean, is that, I mean, is that okay with you guys? I don't want to do something that doesn't make sense.
We're here, and we're happy to do it. And...
All right. Would you like me to sort of summarize what's going on here? Or how would you like to proceed?
All right. Here's how we're going to proceed. I'm going to read the public hearing notice, then summarize the materials that we have in our existing record. Then we're going to hear from you, sir, where you can tell us what you're proposing to do and why. And then you'll probably have some questions from the board. At the conclusion of that, we're going to open it up to anybody who wants to talk about this. And if you're in the audience here and want to talk about it, we ask that you walk to the microphone, identify yourself, and tell us where you live. So the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing in the mural room, 878 Tremont Street, and via Zoom, well, it's going to be tonight rather than... So it's Thursday, January 11, 2024, at 7:30. To consider the application of Peter McNerney for a special permit under Articles 400 and 900, Sections 401.2, Number 4, 410.1, 410.4, and 906.2 of the Duxbury Protective Bylaw. The property is located at 12 Sammaset Road, parcel number 126-997-011 of the Duxbury Assessor's map, consisting of .9 acres in the residential compatibility district and owned by 12 Sammaset Road LLC. The applicant proposes to raise and rebuild a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling. A special permit is required. Then we give directions on how you can view it, either the application on the website and folks who have disabilities, we're certainly entitled to, and will be provided any accommodation that makes sense. All right. So why don't, why don't we first summarize what's in the record? I just pulled it up.
Okay.
All right. Okay. We have an application, architectural plans, an existing conditions plan, architectural proposal with respect to the garage, plot plans, and supplements to the application. Was there stuff that came in today?
Yeah, so it was...
Okay. So here's the application I have. All right. Here's the case responses. Great.
Thanks.
All right. We've got the application, series of photographs, the plans that I referenced. So we also asked for input from various boards and agencies. This is the memo from the health agent on behalf of the Board of Health. There are no records in the Board of Health on what this property has for existing septic system. If the existing system is to be used, a Title V inspection will need to be completed and the passing report submitted to the Board of Health. If the system is assessed pool, it is an automatic failure and will need to be upgraded to meet current codes. A percolation test was performed on June 8, 2022. The Board of Health will need a disposal system construction permit submitted and approved prior to signing off on a building permit application. The proposed plan submitted with this application shows five bedrooms. The system will need to be sized accordingly and meet all setbacks if this is an increase inflow from the existing home. We have a memo from the design review board. They met in November 15. They wanted to make the following recommendations. They recommend that the owner retain as much of the existing character and detail of the original house, such as historic timbers, decorative curved railings, window proportions, material, exterior materials, and shutters. The design review board recommends the owner change the proposed standing seam metal roof to asphalt shingles on both the upper and lower roof. If the lower roof is below a 312 pitch, make an effort to change it to 312. You only need to set a roof three to four inches below a window for flashing. DRB notes there is a value in exploring a renovation versus a complete rebuild of a historic home. From a historic preservation point of view, saving and/or salvaging materials retains the essence of this historic home better than borrowing details for a brand-new home. From a sustainability perspective, there will be less waste when the house is torn down. There is a memo from Jane and Tony Kelso. We are neighbors at 12 Sammaset Road. We just wanted to, it noted to the ZBA that at the back of the lot, 12 Sammaset Road, there's a power line that serves the utilities not only for 12 Sammaset, but also 18 Puritan Road, 1, 4, and 9 Elder Brewster Road, so a total of five houses. This is not noted on the plot plan submitted. There is no easement for this line from the power company. Perhaps it is because it was done many years ago when the properties were all summer cottages and many owners at the time wanted the lines run down the middle of the lots and not on the street. We have a, we have a memo from Boris and some photos, and I'm going to let Boris summarize what, what, what his memo addresses. Boris, why don't you talk about it?
Yep, here I am. Sorry. The, well, basically, what I was curious, based on Mr. Kelso's email, I was just curious to see what existed, and I went there, just happened to be after that big windstorm that we had, and I was surprised to see that was one of the few areas without damage, with downed power lines. But the, what the photos suggest is generally when there's an easement in place, the power company would like accessibility to whatever width of an area they would, they want that goes underneath the power line itself. So I didn't see any sort of clear area, at least from the backside of the lot, a shot from, I think, Elder Brewster Road going into the, into the property, heading east. And it's basically clearly inaccessible, not that it needs to be accessible, it would have been damaged at the time, but generally if there were an easement, that would allow the power company a determined area where they had, where they can access the property. So the point of my memo was just that, and that was also a concern of the neighbors, that they maintain an area that's going to at least be identified on the lot, and that would be cleared to be serviced at any time for whatever reason.
Thanks, Boris.
Does that help?
Yes, a lot. Okay. We have a memo from Allison Mott. I have received your notice informing me of the meeting, during which the planned modifications of 12 Sammaset Road will be discussed. My family and I own the house next door at 9 Elder Brewster. I reviewed the plans to renovate 12 Sammaset with the owner and have no objection to what he is proposing regarding the setback line. I understand that if this permit is not allowed, in order to maintain the proposed design, he would be forced to rebuild the house further away from Sammaset and closer to our house, which I would very much like to avoid. In further review of the proposed plans for 12 Sammaset, I noticed that the proposed garage will now be positioned to start during the current existing garage. It is also proposed to be both larger to accommodate two cars, and a second story is being added to the existing one-story garage structure. Therefore, if this permit is not allowed, then this part of the structure would be positioned even further back, encroaching on our 9 Elder Brewster house, closer to the electric lines, and require more removal of mature trees that are essential to our environment. We also got an email from David and Suki Amory at 18 Puritan Road. We write regarding the McNernys' special permit application for the demolition replacement of their house at 12 Sammaset. We live at 18 Puritan, abutting the west side of the property. Puritan is an old private unpaved road. Should the board grant the special permit, please consider, including a condition specifying that construction vehicles in connection with this project be permitted to use only Sammaset Road, a paved public way, in addition to Marshall Street for access to and from the property and for material and other deliveries. All construction vehicles not be permitted to use Puritan Road, which intersects Elder Brewster Road, also a private road to the north. As old dirt roads, they are shared by a few neighboring property owners. Puritan and Elder Brewster Roads will not take the wear and tear of construction traffic. The use of the roads in connection with the project construction will lead to significant repair at significant cost. This proposed condition is in addition to the concern about the overhead utility lines running through the property, brought to the attention of the Board of Appeals by Tony and Jane Kelso in their email. Might the condition for the utility lines include placement underground? Okay. Lauren, did we get anything else?
Conservation memo.
Oh, there is a conservation memo in it. Just a second, I skipped it. From the conservation administrator, I have reviewed this case and determined it does not fall within the jurisdiction of the CONCOM. Their proposed work is not within 100 feet of a resource area or 200 feet of a riverfront area. All right. I think that's everything. All right. So why don't we first hear from the applicant? Why don't you explain what you're proposing to do? And we'll probably have questions.
Okay. Well, real quickly, this property was purchased by my grandfather in 1951, so it was a summer home at the time of the wraparound porch up on Cedar Post. And over the years, it's been modified several times. Probably the most major modification was when he retired, he dug a basement, put in a foundation, enclosed most of the porch, insulated the ground floor but not the second floor. And then my mother ended up with the property in the late 80s. She made further changes, enclosed more, most of the rest of the, of the wraparound porch, renovated the kitchen, et cetera, et cetera. So one of the issues, important issues here is this house has several little sort of components to it. Some of them are insulated and some of them are not. There are beams holding up the edge of the house, et cetera. So we've been, in order to keep the house functional, we've been sort of fighting various issues along the way. And it's, you know, there's a leaky roof, there's a lot of mold, there's low ceilings, and so I decided it's time to, you know, sort of try to fix those problems. And in doing that, our initial reaction was to keep trying to fix issues within the house because we really liked the house. We liked the design. It brings back memories to the entire family. We have no desire to put in some structure that doesn't look like what's in there now, but we came to the conclusion it was better in many respects to just rebuild it as opposed to work with it. So our proposal is to take the house down, keep the same foundation, build a house that is identical in design, or almost identical in design, on top of the existing foundation. We think we can solve the mold problem, the leaky roof problem, and we need to raise the ceilings. The ceilings on the ground floor are not much over seven feet, and there are beams that stick down, holding up what used to be, you know, the edge of the screen porch. So why are we here? We're here because the front part of the house, the house that's on Sammaset, is in, is forward of the setback line that was obviously created well after the house was built. And I'm told, and it certainly makes sense, that in rebuilding it, we would be putting more volume of the house in that area that's forward of the setback line because we're raising the ceiling for that part of the house. And I think the, I haven't measured it, but I think it's like first three or four feet that's on Sammaset, forward of the setback line. We're not changing the footprint at all, we're just making it higher by raising the ceiling. I think it's a foot, a foot and 10 inches if my numbers are right. So the volume of the house forward that line is increased. We are also on the front door there, which is to the left of the area in question. We are putting a sort of a roof that allows people to sort of get to the front door without getting rained on, and that also increases, I think, the impermeable space, some of which is in front of the setback line. So we really, we want to keep the house. We want to keep it benign. We like it. But in order to solve some of the problems, we need to sort of increase that area. It's not a big area, as you can see, but we need to increase that area that is forward of the setback line. So I think that requires this application, that's why we're here. I might add quickly, we're well aware of the fact that our cesspools are not within the requirement, and we have been planning far along to replace them with the appropriate septic system. We have retained the same folks who did the plat in front of you to make that proposal, and that's in the works and will certainly be an application that will be seen to...
How many bedrooms are in the existing house?
It's a good question. We are, there are two bedrooms on the ground floor. My grandfather actually built the bedroom on the west side because he was in a firm and couldn't go upstairs. Upstairs is a little like the rabbit warrant, to be honest. There are five bedrooms upstairs, all quite small. And as we, actually, four and a half, I think is a better way to describe it. And as we rebuild it, as you can see from the plans, we're going to end up with five bedrooms in total in the house.
I have a question, if I may.
Go forward.
So in the application, where you provide the percentage change, you only account for the house and not the dimensions for the garage, but I believe those should be included because it requires the existing and proposed conditions on the lot, and the garage is one of those? Yeah?
We did ask that question, and I'm pretty sure we supplied what was required of us. And we're happy to do it. We actually included in the application all the dimensions and the drawings of the garage itself. And none of the garage is in the non-conforming area. So the structure that has a non-conforming element to it is the house. The garage is well back of the setback line.
So Jim, they can just do the garage without a special permit?
Correct the month of...
Okay. Thank you.
I did, just for comment, I went back and forth with the engineer on this particular plan because I wanted to make, we had to clarify, some of the calculations were inconsistent with the sheet, and it looks like you're looking at golden one. This is the dual that's typed up. Do you have that?
The supplement B thing?
Yeah.
So those calculations were corrected, adjusted, and clarified on the plot plan because that was inconsistent, which is why I hadn't signed it before. So we had that all cleared up, had the new sheet created and, or submitted, and that's, it's consistent with the plot plan when I reviewed it.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm having trouble figuring out where the existing non-conformity is. Is it only in terms of front setback?
No issues with coverage at all?
Right. It's a big lot.
What, what makes it, I think, a little more difficult? I don't... Do you have the existing, the other existing plot plan? The new one I submitted?
I don't know. If I'm reading the plot plan correctly, Jim, it doesn't look like, is it, is the proposed house being slid back away from the front lot line?
Yeah, maybe .1 feet, according to the existing. There's an existing and proposed. What makes it a little tough to see is the, it's ghosted, the existing is ghosted under the proposed, and it's the same footprint. So it makes it a little more difficult to see.
Yeah, that's just the roof area.
Six.
Where on this plot plan is this utility?
It's actually on the plot plan. Can you see it on the small plot plan?
It says OHW going across the top. There's a dotted line.
It's kind of on the northern side of the lot.
It's not on that plan.
It is on that plan.
It is.
It's just very ghosted light.
I can show you. Can you take the cursor over and, is that it? That line right there?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, got it. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
So it only goes in the property when you...
Well, it's this little guy right here.
And then it skirts along the property line and kind of juts a little further north once it gets into 333 Marshall, at a small angle, two to three degree angle.
Sir, there was a submission about use of the private roads for building, and is a desire to limit access from Sammaset Road. What are your rights to use the other roads if they, if they are in fact private ways?
I don't think they're private ways. They're just on A.
We know whether Puritan is the private road?
My understanding is Puritan and Elder Brewster are both private. The power line runs down the road.
Would you mind just going up to the microphone so everybody at home can hear? Thank you.
My name is David Amory, 18 Puritan Road.
Oh, yeah.
And I sent the memo regarding the road, and I've met with Peter McNerney. We had a nice conversation back in September. He walked me all through the house, and it was, it was, it was a nice meeting. One of the things that did come up in that meeting was the, was the presence of this power line overhead. It's helpful to see on the plot plan that we just saw now. And that plot, excuse me, we're getting onto, the question was about the paved roads, sorry. My understanding is that the paved roads are, excuse me, the private roads, the unpaved roads, dirt roads are privately owned. Sammaset Road off of Marshall Street is a public way, is my understanding. It is paved. That runs west to intersect with Puritan Road, which runs north and south. Puritan Road, when you go north on Puritan Road, that then dies and turns into Elder Brewster Road, which then turns to the east and back to Marshall Street. What's happened over the years is that construction trucks, and trucks in general, landscaping trucks, doing work on Marshall Street and looking for a nice way to turn around to get back out Marshall Street and up to town, used to turn on Sammaset and turn on Puritan on the dirt road, turn on Elder Brewster on the dirt road, and continue it on to Marshall. So it's a convenient way of getting around. Our concern is, and over the years, the roads suffer some deterioration as a result of that. Our concern is that with a lot of construction activity, heavy trucks, materials, delivering materials, concrete trucks, et cetera, if they're take, continue to take that more convenient route, which is not really saving much time anyway, it will incur wear and tear on the road, and we would just appreciate it if they would stay on Sammaset. And certainly there, given the size of the lot, there would be easy means of pulling trucks up onto the property and turning around and backing out and whatever, to be, to be able to avoid the use of those dirt roads. Does that help?
Thank you. Yeah.
While you're there, did you have any other comments, well, relative to this proposal?
I suspect historic will be making perhaps a comment. There was a historical commission hearing back in September, and there is certainly historic interest in this house, but that's already been determined with a, with a one year delay. My concern is more about the, it's something that I think the town and the zoning board of appeals and all, all the boards around town need to be thinking about, particularly in, in connection with sea level rise, and we have just had a storm, we're having another storm coming up. The use of, or the throwaway nature of a project like this, there is certainly connection of the family to this existing structure. And my feeling and my experience, I'm an architect who's worked on a lot of old buildings, that there is great value to this house to save it and modify it as necessary, rather than tearing it down and throwing it away. There is tremendous value in the embodied energy in that building. If you think about when the building was originally built, all the extraction that was made for the materials, the transportation, the construction of the house, the operation of the house over all these years... of the house over all these years, to have that being torn down, thrown away, much of it's being saved. The basement, I understand, the foundation, as I understand it, is to be salvaged, which is great. But then to build it all over again, to me, seems, in these days, in this day and age where we are, needs to be something considered very seriously. So, that was a comment about that. I think the overhead wire, trees falling on cable, that cable overhead has presented problems. Two years ago, two years ago in October, we had the storm, we were out for, at power for a number of days. And that is something that, does this, I guess the question is, how would that be handled?
I guess that raises a question for me, maybe you can answer it, maybe the applicant can answer it. Why would this proposal and the new home change that condition in any way?
Is it an opportunity to address that condition? And the, because it's a condition that's existing that's just not satisfactory, it would be a benefit to the owners to somehow deal with it so that there, that it doesn't become something they have to wrestle with, because as soon as something goes wrong, there's communication back and forth, or the power's out, your house doesn't have any power, we're losing power, our neighbors are losing power, the wire that goes through that house, the utilities that go through overhead on that property serve four other houses. So, it was an old-fashioned way of doing it, and there must be some other way of trying to handle that while this house is being constructed at this point. Can it be put underground? And it's been created and put underground at that point to avoid these problems. And all over town, we know how, how much we're dealing with falling branches and falling trees, and a number of trees on that site have fallen.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak with respect to this application? Come on up, introduce yourself.
Thank you. I'm Ted Carpenter on Summer Street, 267 Summer Street, also the chair of the historical commission. As Mr. Amory just noted, the property is currently under demolition delay, and I've had a couple of meetings with Mr. McNerney. It's good to see you. And through you, Mr. Chair, if I could, we've already covered sort of the issue surrounding that, I'm not going to repeat that, but Peter had asked the question, you know, why is the delay being put in place? What are we preserving here? And I wanted to make sure, because he's made the comment that he appreciates the natural materials, the wood that's used to construct the house. And the house has a date of construction of 1920, not particularly old, a little past the antique threshold. But the fact of the matter is that the structure was moved onto the lot from another location. We do not have a record of the original date of construction. So, Peter, I wanted to make sure that, you know, to share with you, again, through you, Mr. Chair, that it is quite likely that the timbers, the interior structure of the home are 19th century materials, which have much higher intrinsic value than modern kiln-dried timbers. So, I'm not suggesting, you know, any specific condition or anything like that, but I wanted to make sure, to take this opportunity while we are discussing the home, to note that and encourage you to preserve as much of the existing timber work as possible and in place, if at all possible. And if not, to reuse on the structure, and if not reused on the structure, to at least ensure that they are retained and made available for recycling, because there's tremendous intrinsic value to those old timbers, and they are simply not available in the world anymore. So, it's a shame to let them go. And that's really my only comment. Thank you.
Mr. Carpenter, if I may, how do you know that the house was moved from another location?
It's been part of the historical research, and we could ask the town historian to fill in more on that.
I'm just curious.
Heard it. Yeah, Gershon Chandler relocated the structure onto the lot in 1920. That's what we know.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I agree with that. My records show that something was moved out of the property in the 20s. I would point out, I did point this out to the commission, that there's not that much of the house left, I have to say, from the original structure, but there are certain, there are certainly parts of it that are, because the entire ground floor, if you go up the second floor, I think it's pretty close to the lot, so I think your comment is a fair one.
Board have any other questions?
Does the power line that runs through the property that we were talking about serve this property for electrical as well?
Yes, it serves our house and the nine Elder Brewster. I know that, and I accept that it serves these other houses as well.
Okay, thanks. It's hard to tell because of the ghost line that just runs across the corner and where it goes from there into the house.
Yeah. I might, I might comment that, look, I mean, if it's the decision of the five property owners to bury that line, I'm happy to pay my fair share to do so. It's not been a big issue between us and nine Puritan over the years, but it certainly comes up every now and then. But, you know, if they, if the group gets together and decides it's better to be buried, you know, I will do my share.
Yeah, that was, that was what I was going to suggest anyway. Maybe the five property owners ought to just talk about it, figure out how to deal with it. Jim, so principally, all that's happening here is that we're going to get a second story in the setback.
Yeah, and the building itself increases in length across that, right around 15 feet, but no further than the setback.
It's also, it's not a second story on the area in front of the setback, it's an increased height of the first story.
Okay. All right. I guess, I'm still confused because the plot plan appears to show that the, that the proposed dwelling is going to sit right on the demolished dwelling's foundation. Is that?
Correct.
Is that not, that is accurate? Okay.
What's different is that the first, the ceiling height of the first floor is raised, therefore, there's that sort of roof that comes out over towards Sammaset, that has to go up a foot and a half. And so, the volume of the house that violates the setback increases. The footprint does not, but the volume increases by marginally.
Okay. Thank you.
And there's a little bit of an increase of about 15 feet in length that's within the setback.
Where's that, Jim? I'm trying to figure that out.
I'm confused by that too, Jim. I'm not.
I can bring these up there.
Thanks. Maybe it's just the plants are too small.
Yeah, that's entirely possible.
So, a couple things. This is the existing structure.
Yeah.
The length of it. The proposed is longer by about 15 feet overall. The roof, this is the section that goes up, these are proposed screen porch and a covered porch. Overall, this is about 15 feet longer than what the existing is that's in the setback. So, there's also, that's why it's a little more.
Because we're putting a proposed, because we're putting a covered porch in.
Exactly. Screen porch.
Okay.
And a covered porch. So, it gets a little longer this way.
I see. The porches is what's doing.
Right. And then the garage itself is a better situation. I don't know if you can see it better on this plan, just so you understand this. That's the better version of seeing what the overhead wires and where it comes in.
Oh, got it. Okay, yeah. Thank you.
You want to hold on to this for a minute?
No.
That clears it up. Thank you. Any further questions?
I do not have any.
None? So, I don't have any further questions either. Boris, do you?
The, my only concern is still making sure that with the local power company, maybe Jim knows more, of how close, do they have setbacks that they be putting that line, if they're going to be putting any septic and stuff? We don't even know where that was going to go.
It's, uh.
I think that would be imperative.
Boris, the utility is not within our jurisdiction at all. It's totally under the utility's purview.
And I don't think it changes the existing condition.
It doesn't. I don't, I'm not sure you can even condition that. It's really, we don't have any jurisdiction over that.
Oh, I don't even need any condition, but this is, this benefits the applicant in any case, because in case of an emergency or anything like that, I mean, I would imagine that they would need to know how to access the property. We don't, let them know if it's septic or a new septic or whatever. I mean, times of emergency, they're just going to come in guns blazing and put a line in. That's my point in knowing all that, but that's just me.
In a, in a perfect world, let's just say that the neighbors got together and came to an agreement, they would have to work with Eversource and come down to an agreement with them. They could, you, the group could get together and design whatever they want, but Eversource has the final approval on what that would be. So, that's kind of where that lies.
Mr. Amory?
Yes, thank you. I think it's an important issue that, and perhaps there could be a condition attached to, should the permit be granted to this. In that storm two years ago, we, as neighbors, went out and tried to tape off where the septic system was, so that the power trucks that were, the electric trucks that would drive onto the property to do what they needed to do, wouldn't drive over the septic system. So, as neighbors, we did that. And I think the, I think what needs to be really sorted out before a permit is fully granted or as part of, as a condition to the permit, is resolving the placement and location of the power lines and with the consent of the neighbors. We're all working together, there are at least five owners, five houses that are served by that power line. And in addition to that, I don't know how often you do order of conditions to go along with this, but is there a way to make a condition regarding the use or the non-use of the dirt roads? Thank you.
There is a person that I think you know who it would, who has her hand up. Why don't you identify yourself and talk about?
Yes, hello. I wasn't able to come. I'm Sukie Amory, David Amory's 18 Puritan Road. And I'll just briefly say that October storm ended up being a real nightmare because the poles are, oh, you may know this, but the poles are owned by Verizon. Eversource is on there, and then the various cable companies are on there. The cable companies couldn't do anything till Eversource had done their thing, and Eversource couldn't do anything until Verizon came and fixed the broken pole. And it, as David said, we were happy to help because the McNerneys don't live there year round. Pete, I think we were talking to one of your brothers, and we ran out with yellow tape and taped off where we were told the septic was to prevent the trucks from coming on there. So, it is complicated. They were able to set up, the wires run through the north side of the property, across Puritan Road to a pole at the Kelso's. It also serves the house across from the Mas on Elder Brewster and our house at 18 Puritan and the Kelso's, from a pole, at which point, for the Kelso's and the Amory's, it runs underground to our houses. So, it's a, it is a complicated situation because the quote-unquote ownership and the responsibility for the poles is split between three companies that don't always communicate. So, I just wanted to add that little caveat about how it worked. It took about a month for us to get permanently reinstalled. They set up a temporary wire through the property, but because it was such a big storm, as you may recall, and because of the three different companies needing to coordinate and not really having good communication, it, you know, it was complicated.
So, let me just.
I can make a quick comment here.
Yes, sure.
I'm struggling to understand the connection between this and the permit, all right? But I have, I have no problem agreeing to get together with the neighbors and figuring out how to handle this issue. I think it's a separate issue. If it's one that threatens all five houses, initially it needs to be dealt with. And if you're looking for sort of an agreement that we all have to figure out what to do on finding a.
Thank you. So, this board is a board of limited jurisdiction. We get to determine whether this is, qualifies for a special permit through a variety of factors, but we don't determine how utilities work. We don't determine who has rights to use what road. We don't determine how you choose to use the wood from your old house. We determine a very much more narrow thing. And that's whether this modest extension of the home within the setback is likely to be detrimental to the neighborhood. And so, just so that everybody's on the same page here. I don't have any further questions.
I do not.
I do not.
All right. So, because we have four instead of five, what our practice generally to do is, just so that we don't leave an applicant hanging, is to just sort of go around and take a sort of straw poll before the real poll, as to whether the four people who are in fact sitting are likely to vote in favor or against. I personally will likely vote to approve this special permit.
I too would vote to approve the special permit.
I will as well.
Boris?
I'm likely to approve it as well.
Okay. So, what I'm going to do is move to close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor, aye, Wayne?
Aye, Tanya.
Aye, Phil.
Aye, Boris.
Okay. Any discussion?
None here.
All right. The only discussion I'm going to have is, we're certainly not the last permit that needs to be addressed here, because they've got a lot of septic to deal with.
Board of Health is a big one.
So, I mean, there is going to be less, less vagary as to where the septic field is going forward than there is now. All right. I'm going to move to approve the special permit.
Second?
Aye.
Aye, Wayne.
Aye, Tanya.
Aye, Boris.
All right. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. The next thing on for this evening is actually two matters that relate to Zero Toby Garden. My intention is to just read both public hearing notices and just deal with this whole thing in one hearing. I understand that there's an appeal from the building inspector's refusal to acknowledge that it's a built-up lot and that there's a request for a variance. And unless somebody sees another way to deal with this, I'd like to deal with it in one fell swoop. All right. So, case number 2023-21. Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing tonight to consider the application of Bellpoint LLC. We've got that. For an appeal under Articles 400 and 900, Sections 401.8, 406, and 906.1 of the bylaw. The property is at Zero Toby Garden Street, parcel number 075-020-003 of the Duxbury Assessor's map, consisting of .34 acres in the residential compatibility district and the aquifer protection overlay district, and owned by Ronald and Margaret De Lorenzo. The applicant's request that the Board of Appeals overturn the zoning enforcement's officer's decision to deny the request for a determination that the lot is accepted from dimensional and intensity regulations by the zoning bylaws. We give instructions in how to view it and how folks who are differently abled can also view it. You can see it on TV, at Verizon 39 or Comcast 19. We're also going to hear, and simultaneously going to hear, with respect to the same lot, gonna hear, with respect to the same lot, a request for a variance from Section 410.4 of the zoning bylaws, given the area of frontage and triangular shape of this parcel, as it causes it to be non-compliant. Further, the sharp vertex of the two intersecting streets, coupled with the front yard setbacks that are required to be calculated from both streets, prevent compliance with a 150-foot diameter circle and limits the building envelope. These are all factors of the shape of the lot, which were caused not by any overt action of the property owners, but by eminent domain taking. Okay. So, same here. What we have is an application for a variance, a fairly lengthy description as to why the applicant believes a variance is appropriate, which I will let the applicant summarize through council. Um, we have a series of, we had the initial letter to Mr. Wazalowski seeking determination. We have Mr. Wazalowski's denial of that request. We have a series of deeds. We have the old zoning bylaw. Plot plans. Assessor's card. Memo from a health agent indicating that the Board of Health will require a perk test to be performed if the lot is determined to be buildable. The information will be used to design a septic plan that will need to be submitted and approved prior to sign-off on any building permit. We also got a memo from the Conservation Commission, I think, that said CONCOM approval is required. Or did it? I don't have it in front of me.
Yes. It falls within the 200-foot riverfront area. If future development is proposed, it will require filing.
All right. Um, we get anything else?
Building Board. All right, case response materials.
Oh, the memo from the planning board. At the meeting of the planning board, the board voted four with one abstention, which was me, to recommend the denial of the appeal of the building, building inspector's determination and to defer judgment to this board with respect to the variance. All right. So let's hear from the applicant. Your materials are pretty thorough. I think I have an understanding of what you're talking about, but why don't you go through it?
Hi, everyone. Dan Gorman, Newton, Massachusetts, acting as the agent of the longtime owner and the DeLorenzo family. So, just wanna cast a wide net here, recognizing that we did kind of discuss the, the appeal and the recommendation from two nights ago from the planning board. But I think, just big picture here, I, I took my counsel's, you know, pages of documentation and recommendations. I just distilled it down to something that I think a layman such as myself can digest here in this three-pager. The third page just being a map that shows the taking from 1952, and then page one being a fact pattern and page two being our interpretation. There's no new material in here. This is just a distillation of all that material that I had mentioned. So we'll start with the fact pattern. And again, this is just kind of broad strokes and then we can get into the appeal versus the variance or what have you. So, the fact pattern, five facts here. The first fact being, prior to the taking, so you have, let me back up, I'm sorry. So you have Old Toby Garden Street. It's been there since prior to 1952. And then New Toby Garden Street was built to, I believe, for topographical reasons and to create better traffic patterns and, you know, less dangerous roads in 1952. That taking occurred that split the DeLorenzo parcel, known at that time as parcel five, into two separate pieces. It was a square parcel that was over 40,000 square feet with over 2,000, excuse me, 200 feet of frontage. And based on the bylaws at that time, that parcel could have been, been made into two separate buildable parcels because of frontage and area. With that taking that took place in 1952, as shown on page three, I'm not sure if that's on here as well, but you can see, for those of you with this three-pager, that the taking split it into two contiguous, not discontiguous, non-conforming lots, right? So each lot was, what was once a square lot, over 40,000 square feet, became two separate triangular lots, discontiguous from one another, each of which was under 20,000 square feet. So those two lots are now, based on the, I think, town council's interpretation, I believe correctly so, that these lots are, of course, these lots are new. They're born as, if you will, as of 1952. Those lots, born in 1952, were non-conforming at that point in time because they were each under 20,000 square feet. So a total of 15 lots sustained discontinuation or reduction in square footage because of that taking in 1952, for which Duxbury compensated each owner $100 or less, including the DeLorenzo family, the owner of parcel five. Parcel five was the only lot made non-conforming because of that taking. And years after being sold by the original parcel five owner, meaning the DeLorenzo family, the northern of these two triangular lots, one of the two contiguous, discontiguous, non-conforming lots created because of the taking, was built upon in 1972. So that's the fact, those are just the facts. Going to page two, which would be our interpretation of those facts. So according to Noni versus Commonwealth, owners are entitled to be compensated for the fair market value of that which they have been deprived. The measure of damages is the market value at the date of taking and the land taken, of the land taken and the diminution in value due to the taking of the owner's remaining land.
I'm pretty sure we can't fix that one at this point.
Fair enough. I don't, this is understandably so. So Duxbury at the time, Duxbury's $75 compensation for the taking of the DeLorenzo parcel, parcel five at that time. The only lot rendered non-conforming by the taking suggests that the remaining portions of the lot, meaning the two remaining triangles, each of which was under 20,000 square feet, were considered to have not suffered any diminution in value, i.e. that the residual value, that the residual land remained buildable. Otherwise, they would have been compensated more than all the other 14 lots, lot owners affected. The other 14, their lots were still buildable as a result of the taking and they were paid somewhere between $10 and $100. The same is true of the DeLorenzo family. And therefore, one would deduce at that point in time, there was no diminution in value perceived by the town. This interpretation supported, one of the two contiguous, I'm sorry, this interpretation supported by parcel 7522, one of the two discontiguous, non-conforming lots created by the taking, being built upon in 1972, was presumably done so by way of either grandfather right, if you will, or variance. That one or the other, one would think. As is true for the northern lot that I had mentioned, we can probably go to page three if that's okay, just for the visual. So since that northern lot on screen here, the red lot, was in 1972 built upon, presumably through grandfathering or a variance, the same would, one would think would be true of the southern lot, the green lot, the green triangular lot on screen here. Again, each of those triangles, under 20,000 square feet. I would say, for what it's worth, the southern lot, the lot in question here, actually had frontage on Old Toby Garden Street, whereas the northern lot did not, for whatever that's worth. But this seems to be apples-to-apples, red lot to green lot. So that's just high level kind of thinking, okay, the northern lot, that you, they were not, there was no compensation, right, for any diminution in value as previous, as I just discussed. The northern lot was built upon in 1972. We're not sure if it was grandfathering or variance. We're just asking for the same to be true of the green lot. I'm asking on behalf of the DeLorenzo family.
All right. Well, they understand the presentation. Jim, did we figure out how the northern lot got built?
I reviewed the street file. There's nothing in the street file except for the original document on it. I went to planning today to see if they had anything relative to the taking in this lot. They had no record of why or how this house was actually permitted at that time in 1972. So I really can't speak to it. I wish I could, but...
Do they have any agendas or anything on record? Because I know they have a huge history in their files.
With the town clerk, maybe.
So, Amy, I saw an email from you to, that analyzed this issue for Jim when Jim was responding to the request in the first instance. Would you go through your analysis?
Sure. Thank you. Amy Questle, Town Council. So, the applicant had approached the building commissioner claiming that this lot was buildable, subject to the separate lot exemption. The separate lot exemption is found in 48, Section 6, Paragraph 4. It's sometimes called the isolated lot exemption. It is when you have a lot that is not held within common ownership of any other lot and it has at least 50 feet of frontage and 5,000 square feet. But that's not all of the prongs. The, the first prong of that provision is that the lot existed as a conforming, separate lot prior to the adoption of the zoning provision that rendered it non-conforming. Here, that, we don't have that here. What we have here is a taking, the taking resulted in this lot being non-conforming. The lot needed, I think it was 100 feet of frontage and 20,000 square feet of area. It does not have that. It has 50 feet of frontage and it has 14.8 square feet of air, in area. So because this lot, when it was created, was never conforming, it does not enjoy the, the separate lot provision. So that was my, that was my opinion that Jim adopted and said that he would not be issuing a building permit because this lot is not buildable.
Can I ask you about the 50 feet of frontage thing? It looks like it has 275 feet of frontage.
It has more than, more than 50. Yes, yes. That's what I meant, sorry.
May I just say I agree with that assessment, right? That was, that's for the, this is a two-part conversation.
Right.
That was through the lens of the, the appeal for the grandfathering, right? And I think there, there's weight to that interpretation, Amy, on the, on the appeal side for grandfathering.
Okay. That's, I appreciate you acknowledging that. All right. Let's hear the variance claim.
So the variance claim, which I assume is what the northern lot had taken in then early 1970s, was the, the unique shape of the lot that was created as a result of this taking. And that being the two triangles. So if, and which have resulted in, you know, if you see, there's somewhere within these 70 pages, forgive me, toward the back, you can see a, a circle with a 150-foot diameter that is impossible to fit in, given the shape of, that was created as a result of this taking. So the, the way that Old Toby Garden Street and New, and Toby Garden Street meet at that specific axis, it creates a triangle that you cannot, that cannot accommodate a 150-foot diameter.
Correct.
Circle, which is also true of the northern lot. Of course, there's the hardship, right? Since there was never compensation for any diminution in value to the DeLorenzo family in the taking of the 1950s, this is their, the DeLorenzo family's chance to be compensated now, which I would assume was the understanding at the time of the taking and, you know, kind of corroborated based on the 1972 piece as well, and, and the, the 150-foot circle, not fitting in there based on the, the unique shape of this lot.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Would the DeLorenzos have any documentation of the taking and any agreements or anything like that?
No, unfortunate. I mean, not beyond what's already within this encyclopedia we've provided, yeah.
Another thing, Mr. Chairman, is that the, the letter states that there's, that the, the northern triangle could only be, could have only been developed unless two things happened, which is that the town of Duxbury determined that the north parcel was protected as a pre, as a separate lot, or it was grandfathered, or the town granted a variance due to lot shape. There is a third.
That somebody just gave them a building permit?
Made a mistake.
Yeah, yeah. That, that occurred to me.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Thanks for saying that, because that's what I was thinking.
So, Amy, Town Council, this is a unique-shaped lot. What, did you do the variance analysis?
So, I, I did not. The, I mean, I did. I didn't, it wasn't asked for me to do it in writing for Jim because they came in for a variance, which, which I think was a smart idea. But they're asking for more than a variance from the 150-foot circle. They needed a lot area variance, essentially, is what they really need. And while the lot is a unusual shape, the only, there is something that cuts against that, which is that the lot, the northern lot, is the exact same shape. So for a variance, you have to, there's three prongs to a variance, as you know, which the first prong is that there's, there's something making the property unique with regard to soil shape or topography. And by "unique," it says in the statute that it has to be unique from all other properties within the zoning district.
From all other?
So, so there is only one. However, this does have the two streets, that I did notice when I was looking through this. It does have the two streets where the northern one does not. This is smaller than the northern one. So there could be uniqueness. The second prong is hardship, which I think they can prove, I think any applicant can prove that usually for a variance. That's the easy prong. And then the third one is not more detrimental or within the, it meets the purpose of the zoning bylaw.
So, I, I understand what you just said about hardship, but it, I'm a little confused by it. You had a piece of property that was, that could have been divided in two but wasn't. There were two buildable lots. They weren't two buildable lots at the time of the taking. They already have one house on the two pieces of property.
Yes.
At the time of the new zoning bylaw, I guess they could have still done the two houses. That's a difficult analysis.
So at the time of the taking, they were eligible for two lots?
Yep.
They wouldn't be now.
No.
And in 1972, I don't believe they would have been.
No.
No.
I think it was already changed.
I think it was changed.
Yeah.
All right. Why don't we hear from anybody in the, in the audience or on the wall who has something to add here?
Hey, Wayne, this is Boris Alco.
Yeah, definitely.
I just, I don't know if we, it was addressed, but I know in recent memory, we came across the situation where there was land that was not built and we talked about the different things. But how is it, has this, this parcel been taxed as a buildable parcel? I forget how to read those tax cards. I think we, we came up with that a few cases prior to this.
There are two different codes that are used. I don't know the meaning of the codes. The DeLorenzo parcel is, is identified as Code 1320 residential land, whereas the 280 Toby Garden parcel is identified as Code 1010 residential land.
See a member of the Select Board here. Do you know the difference?
This has not been assessed as buildable land.
That, that was my...
I had, I had the assessment.
It says, it says use code thirteen twenty, and then it says vacant land dash U N, which I think would mean unbuildable.
That's, that was my thought, too. And also, just my layman's view of it is that if the assessed value of this land is only seventeen thousand dollars, that doesn't strike me as being, it's being assessed as buildable land.
Yeah, so that's exactly what I was, it could have been that phrase back then.
Well, if you get to take, you know, a big swath out of it for seventy-five bucks, you wonder what... All right. Any?
My name is Pat Stout, Patrick Stout. I'm at, my wife Barbara and myself live at two eighty-three Old Toby, which is the abutting land. I think the, the property lies about fifteen to twenty feet from our house. I had a few, I, it was always told, we've been living there for forty years, and we were informed that it was an unbuildable lot, and it was, it had been required as necessary footage for the house that the De Lorenzos had, had built behind us on that other parcel.
Oh, they used the...
The red, the red triangle.
They used the front, the front.
But, but the, at the time it was built, I, according to what I found from the assessors, that they had sold the land in nineteen seventy-one, February of seventy-one, to Oceanside Realty Trust, Joel D. White as trustee, and for sixty-three hundred dollars. And two years later, it was sold with a house on it to the Thomas and Mary Murphy for thirty, almost thirty-six thousand dollars. And it's passed down several owners. So I, I was surprised to hear that the De Lorenzos still had anything to do with this other triangle. Because I had assumed all along that it was, had been sold as part of one parcel, or I didn't think they could have built that, you know, house on the land in the first place. So my thinking is that, I mean, I don't have all the answers because I couldn't find, I, I knew there was no documentation as to actually having that house built in the first place. But did the De Lorenzos actually own the land when the house was built? Or was that, according to what I saw in the tax assessor's records, it was already, had already been sold by them. So I would think that that would have been sort of just compensation, six, over six thousand dollars for, for the land at the time. I know it's valued at seventeen, the other parcel now, but that's today's prices. And back in the seventy-one, I guess, to sell this one buildable parcel, they, somehow they got it built. I don't know quite how, and neither do you, apparently. But I, I don't, I don't see where the eminent domain thing would have any, any more adverse effect since they had already made some money on the property in the first place. And I don't think that any of the other lots that were subdivided at the time, you know, at the same time, even though they were not separated, I don't think any of those were allowed to have two houses on the same amount of total footage. Pardon me, I'm not, I don't really like speaking publicly, but I'll do the best I can. Anyway, the, I have, there was two other abutters other than myself who wanted to come and were unable to attend. Stephen and Nicole Bates, who live right across Old Toby Garden from it. One, technically, they're at one ninety-seven Toby Garden Street. And, but their driveway is actually right across from this, this parcel in question, on Old Toby Garden. But they had a previously scheduled skiing vacation, so they're not here. And also, the Murphy family right down the road from us is in the same kind of position for different reasons, and were just unable to be here. So there, there are a number of us that are very concerned about, us in particular, because it's, it's, you know, we had bought the property primarily because of its situation with being a wooded property. And I just kind of questioned why wait fifty to seventy-some years to try to do something on this land now? And, and on top of everything else, it's a very dangerous location because of the people. If any of you are familiar with the spot, people come off of Toby Garden Street because it's at an angle, and they're going like hell down that road, and also down Toby Garden as well. But we sometimes call it Toby Garden Speedway. So it's kind of a dangerous location to put a house, and if you had to have it right situated almost on the road, you, it would be really kind of dicey, not something I'd want to live in myself. But the other thing I was wondering about is, is the third thing that you had mentioned is the possibility that there was a mistake in the conveyance at the time of this, of the actual sale. Because I, I would have thought that they would have sold both parts of the lot, since it was unbuildable, more or less. And also, there is an aquifer overlay situation as well. And since it's not a lot of square feet, I don't think it would qualify, even if it was granted the variances, would it, would be, would they be able to do more than one bedroom? Because I think it's only one bedroom per ten thousand square feet. So I, there's, I just, I have some questions about it. I don't have all the facts. But it's about, pretty much all I can throw at it right now.
Okay, so, I mean, the thrust of what you said is clear, but I just want to make it clear for the record. You're opposing this request.
I'm sorry, what?
You're opposing this request.
Yes, I am.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you very much for the additional information. Obviously, it's hard to sort through, and anything we have is helpful.
I'd like to know why the Boston Musicians Association owned the land in the first place. I'm a member. Yeah, I don't, I don't know how. I guess somebody must have left it to them. I mean, I've been a member of that group for over fifty years.
The Historical Commission? No? Okay.
I was always curious. I just saw BMA, and I, and as I told the building inspector, I said, "The only BMA I know is Boston Musicians Association."
Yeah, they're, they own, according to the old map, they own multiple parcels.
Yeah.
They did it, at least at the time of the taking. All right. You, you can certainly respond to that. If others would like to speak, we, we're going to hear them as well.
Absolutely. So just a, a few quick points to hit on. The would-be footprint of this house, there, there would be, I believe, next to your house, there'd be around two hundred feet of woods buffering between each house. So I don't think you guys would, would see the house?
Our land is actually, I mean, our house is actually fifteen feet from the garden.
On the, we'd have to bring it up again. On the, on Old Toby Garden, on Old Toby Garden.
Our house is right here, literally right on that property.
Okay, there would be a hundred feet, then, of, of woods.
Where would you have the house?
Right here.
Okay.
Also, in terms of traffic patterns, right, I mean, the, we'd be on, frontage on Old Toby Garden. As for the aqua fire protection district, that would be a conversation for a later date. That's not...
Because even if you found this, you'd need a special permit to build there.
Totally understand that, right. And that's, that would be a separate conversation, right?
Right.
That's right, for sure. But that, that would be subsequent to just understanding, do we fit the description of a variance here? Based on the odd shape that was created as a result of the taking?
I, okay.
This is not to say an actual house will physically be on this land at any point. This is a conversation to determine, does the shape created based on the building of New, of New Toby Garden Street make this, you know, applicable for a variance?
All right.
There, there are other hurdles to clear on other days.
Yeah, yes. Okay. So...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amy McNabb, two sixty-nine Old Toby Garden Street. I am a member of the select board, but I am speaking on my own and my husband's behalf. We live at two sixty-nine Old Toby Garden Street. I think this is dangerous. I think this is, what's to come as we move through less and less available land for building. I think we are feeling the pressures of trying to develop every possible lot that could be built. I do not, I feel strongly that this is not eligible for a building lot or a variance. Certainly, it's up to you, but I see this as very problematic. I know that it's, we're trying to understand, well, how did the red parcel, the sister, the others, the other part of this square lot, now a triangle, how was that allowed to be built on in nineteen seventy-two? And I know you put out three possible reasons, but maybe there's a fourth reason. Maybe that they calculated the other part of the triangle when they, when they looked at the lot area. It once was contiguous, and maybe in, they felt that, you know, to be fair to this property owner, we will include the, the green triangle, make it there, here's your lot. And, and as my neighbor pointed out, could it possibly have been that then it didn't convey over through some type of conveyance? Was, and maybe it was intended or not intended to be included. Maybe they didn't want to include it for tax purposes, or maybe they did. Who, who knows? I, I'm not sure that it matters. Errors happen. It's never, it's never a good idea to make the same mistake just because a mistake had been made in the past. So, and I also, there's, there's so many, you know, the, the APOD, good point. We need, you know, to, one bed, bedroom per ten thousand square feet of upland. This would be extremely limited. We also have the bylaw that speaks to the shape, what, what is available to be used as calculated lot area. And it's, you're not allowed to use parts of the triangle that taper to a certain distance. There's a, a diagram in our bylaw. So a lot, I think, of this particular triangle wouldn't even be included in, in the, in the square, the square, the area allowed for upland. So it's, it is a very problematic lot in that when you come up the hill on Old Toby Garden and you're veering onto Toby, and as my neighbor pointed out, the cars are coming down, it isn't, it's a, it's, would be a tough lot, even in the best circumstances, to build on there. So for all those reasons, I, I hope I'm not in favor of this application. Thank you for letting me speak.
Sure. Boris, you have any other questions?
Was that me?
Yeah. Yes, Boris.
Yes, one question, thank you. The, what could be built on this lot? Like a barn or a shed? I mean, the interesting thing to me, it wasn't taxed as a buildable lot, so I don't see why we would entertain building something, but it's been something you know?
So it, as of right now, through a variance, without any other variances or nothing, as is, you would have a one-bedroom on this property. And to the point of taxes, which I meant to hit on before, all across Massachusetts, there are lots being overtaxed that are unbuildable and undertaxed that are buildable. These are two separate arms within local government that are not always, the left hand is not always talking to the right hand in these cases. We see it all the time. If that is the precedent for determining if something is buildable or not, we shouldn't even be spending our time here on these evenings.
This is a tough audience for that argument.
I would also say to this audience, I empathize with you guys. I would be saying the same stuff as you. I wouldn't want a house here if I were you guys, but these institutions and these bylaws are in place to protect ourselves from this NIMBY attitude throughout Massachusetts. There, by the bylaws, in a vacuum, separate from the green triangle, there is no convincing me, based on how the bylaws are written, that the awkward shape created that this lot was created into because of New Toby Garden Street, that that fits the description of what calls for a variance here. Well, everything to the side. Not one-bedroom, five-bedroom, green lot, red lot, tax rates, doesn't matter. Change the bylaws, then. This fits the description of a bylaw. And I would be saying the same thing as you guys if I were here right now. I wouldn't want that there.
Okay.
But these exist for a reason.
Perfect. Anybody got further questions?
Oh, I have a gajillion in my head, but I'm not gonna...
I, does anybody else want to talk about this? Okay.
I'll be brief, give you the hour. Tech Harbinger, Summer Street. I grew up at one forty Toby Garden Street. I was six when the house was built across the street, and it was obvious that the house should not have been built. And it is my recollection that it was a deal that involved accounting for the lot across the street. That's my recollection. So I, I think you're correct. And in terms of the lot itself...
I remember nothing from the time I was six.
Correct? I see that. That's, that's absolutely, you know, go by the book. That's, that's correct. The zoning bylaws are there to lay the groundwork, but the public process is the actual enforcement of the zoning bylaw. And, and I think you hear the public input, the house across the street is, you use the road, and you can tell it's just a tough spot. You have to back right onto the road. And turning the corner onto Old Toby Garden, going down the hill with that driveway right there, that's guaranteed accident. And that's a loss.
All right. Thank you very much. So what, what we did the last time, because we only have four members, is rather than close the thing and take a vote, we usually, we do a straw poll so that people can choose to continue or take another shot at it. And so I'm going to just do the straw poll. This strikes me as a very unfortunate set of circumstances, and I guarantee you, I don't think seventy-five dollars was enough for the piece, for the taking. But that is a wrong that we have no ability to right at this juncture. And I don't think, given the unique, unique aspects of this, including the fact that I, there was one lot actually built on this, on the, on one of these two parcels, I don't think that I could vote in favor of granting a variance.
I agree. It doesn't appear to me that the, that the parcel has been taxed as a buildable lot. I have a slightly different opinion than the chairman about the, about whether the seventy-five dollars was appropriate or not. I question, I don't know if it was appropriate or it wasn't appropriate. That would be a tough thing to try to determine, I think, without doing some serious research. But in brief, I'm not inclined to vote in favor of a variance or to vote in favor of overturning the building inspector's determination.
Yeah, I didn't mention the building inspector's determination as to the grandfathering. I'm convinced, and I don't think I can be convinced otherwise, that it is not grandfathered.
I agree with what has been said, and I also, to the petitioner's point, regardless of the assessing records and the tax documents, I, I just, listening to, you know, the detrimental effect that this could have, I am against it.
Boris?
I, I'm in favor of whatever you guys just all equally said. Yeah, it would be, yeah, there's, there's, there's no reason to even entertain the thought of building something there. I mean, other than what could be built, that's why I just threw that out there. If we put a shed, build a garden, do something with land, I don't know what those are, but...
We'll put something there. So, so here's what I can offer you right now. We will kick this can so that you can get a whole board of five and see if you can refine the variance argument further. I, I think you understand that the grandfathering argument is probably going nowhere. Or we can vote today to deny you, but we're going to give you those options.
Can I just ask a, a few follow-up questions?
We haven't closed the public...
To help me understand how I should answer that question. Within the vacuum of these bylaws, right, in terms of the awkward shape that was created as a result of New Toby Garden Street that is preventing a circle of 150 feet diameter, can you guys speak to that individually a little more detail? Because that will inform my response.
That's.
There's been a lot of red herrings.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think the question there is, does, did the northern property meet the 150 circle? Because it wouldn't, and therefore you do not have a unique shape. You have a property directly across the street that has an almost identical shape. So, your, your uniqueness, it cuts against you with regard to uniqueness.
The issue is that the 150 issue, at least for me, means that you, you're requiring multiple bylaws. I mean, multiple variances, not just lot size, but you're gonna have all kinds of setback variances and Ms. McNabb.
We have a footprint for the house with the setbacks as is.
You, you can comply with all setbacks?
Yes.
Where is that plan?
It's on page 1,001 here. It's, um, it's about 10 pages from the end here. Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. It's only one variance. And it's due to the shape.
It can't, it can't be one, only one, because the size, the size of the lot.
Lot size.
There's no setback variance being requested.
Right.
If the, there's a, it's only a size variance that's being requested, only a size variance. And if the lot were not cut into the peculiar, peculiar shape that it was. Not be requested.
There's no building on here.
All right.
There's no, I don't see a plan with a building on it.
Is that the rectangle there?
There's no, I don't see a building either.
Hold on.
It's sitting in the setback.
A little blurry.
Yeah, it's in the setback.
Is it? It says building required setbacks?
Yes.
But the building's in the setback. The corner of the building.
Yeah, it is in the setback. Appears to be that.
All right. We could, we could afford a, a footprint that does not require setbacks.
Oh, for God's sake.
We are not requesting a setback variance. We are requesting a variance for one thing and one thing only, which is the size of the lot.
Okay. So, I don't know, I don't know if your 150 foot question was adequately responded to.
No.
But frankly, I don't know how to respond to it. We, we can continue to talk about this and we can, and we'll let you marshal whatever additional evidence you want to try to persuade us that this is a piece of property that ought to be issued a variance. If you're only looking for one variance and then you're trying to build that house, you're gonna need a second variance, which then becomes an unbelievable hurdle.
Okay.
And you're gonna need a special permit, which is also gonna be a fairly significant hurdle.
Okay.
So, we can do this in pieces, but, all right.
My, my question remains though, because we need to know how to, I'm not, I'm failing to grasp onto any tangible feedback from the board related to my, my argument that is New Toby Garden has created an awkward shape, a rather unique shape that does not stipulate that every single parcel within Duxbury be, you know, it doesn't, the bylaws don't read that there can't be any other triangular parcels within Duxbury. So, this is a unique shape. There are not triangular lots sprinkled throughout Duxbury.
So, the only way you get this, the only way you get this is, is under the state law that permits, that permits these boards to, to issue variances, which means we're going to depart from the language of the bylaw for a limited number of reasons which require specific proof. One of the proofs that you are trying to address is the, is the fact that this is a unique shape. But you also have to show hardship, and you have to show no detriment. And I don't think you're close on those, but we're willing to give you more time.
I'm most concerned with the shape.
I think you've got an argument that the shape is reasonably unique, except the fact that there's a, there's a property of the exact same shape in the exact same zoning district right across the street, which is what town council's telling us.
Right. That was, it's a unique shape, right? There, I mean, it doesn't mean that there, there's, because unique is a relative term. There's really no, I mean, the only other triangular parcel within shouting distance was deemed buildable.
All right, so we're.
Under a different owner, by the way, just to that point. These were two separate owners at that point in time. So, there was no horse trading with someone who wasn't the same owner. This is pure conjecture and it's.
Okay. Well, we're, we're a reviewing board and, you know, I think we've given you all the, all the advice that I'm comfortable trying to provide at this point. So, I, we'll give you the option of, of either continuing or, or we'll take a vote.
So, Wayne, for you, it's not the shape. What's the part that, that's least compelling to you about this?
Literally, I, I'm at a point where we've given you all the advice that I can give you. I, I, I think you need to, if you're gonna continue and come back, I think you're gonna have to prove a lot more hardship and quite a lot in terms of whether there's gonna be detriment. Because every neighbor has come here and testified, or at least alleged, that, that this is a detrimental situation. And the board knows that this is a fairly challenging intersection.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Would you like a continuance?
Sure.
Okay. When do you want to come back?
How's tomorrow?
I'm not available on the 25th.
All right. So, we can have town council, but we need her. So, when's the next time you are available?
I'm here February 8th.
Okay, guess it's February 8th.
It's a date.
All right. We're gonna move to continue to February, February 8th.
I'll second.
Call in favor. All right. Phil?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you, everybody, for coming in. Yes, sir. We're doing that.
That's next.
We're doing it next.
I thought you were ending up.
We're hoping. All right. Thanks very much.
Good night.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much for coming. All right. So, there's administrative review of the decision for 50 Railroad. The people who sat on it are Phil, Judy, who's not here, Emmett.
Who's not here.
Tanya and Boris. Amy.
Can we do this?
I know, can we do this? We only have three of the five people who sat.
So, you, you only need a majority for 40B. It is, it is, it's up to the board. I did provide a, I did provide a draft decision. And this is due on the 23rd. The 40 days, our 40 days are up on the 23rd. So, there's a couple of ways that we can do this. I, I had a few, I had a few questions that are highlighted in yellow that I just wanted the board to look at. Other than that, it is a, it is a, it's my standard 40B decision. There are a few, I'm not, sorry. There are a few issues that I found, one of which is that Mass Housing issued a project eligibility letter to this applicant. The applicant is The Windsor at Millbrook Village LLC. That entity does not exist. I looked that up in the Secretary of State's Corporation's website. It's, it doesn't exist. I looked up the, so as I looked in further, I noticed on the, on the project eligibility application that they had submitted a purchase and sale agreement. The purchase and sale agreement was from 50 Railroad or some, something like that LLC to The Windsor at Millbrook Village LLC. That was signed by Matthew Walsh as the manager of The Windsor at Millbrook Village LLC. So, I then looked up Matthew Walsh in the Secretary of State's website, and he has many entities, none of which are The Windsor at Millbrook Village LLC. So, we have an issue. We have an issue with site control that the applicant does not actually have site control because the purchase and sale agreement was signed by a manager of a LLC that doesn't exist. The problem that we have is that they have, there is a project eligibility letter issued. Project eligibility letter under 760 CMR 5604 is presumptive that three things, that there are three things. The first being that the applicant is an LLC. Second, that there's site control. And third, that there's, they're fundable. Fun, fundable, not fundable. So, we have a bit of a, something I've never encountered, and neither has my, my colleagues that, my two colleagues at KP Law that also do 40Bs. We've never encountered this. The project eligibility letter, interestingly, says that they assume that the, the entity will be created. But I don't know if they actually looked into the fact that the purchase and sale agreement was signed by a manager of an entity that doesn't exist. In any event, we, we could, we could make that, we could condition the project, obviously, that the project has to, that the entity has to be created and that a new purchase and sale has to be issued to, to show that there is site control and that the entity has been created to satisfy 5604. Other than that, there's an issue, I, it's, it's my opinion that there's an issue with the, with the waivers that have been requested. He has requested three waivers, and one is from Section 422.3.1, which is all uses and structures. Basically, that, that the use be allowed. And then the second one is that he not be, he not do mixed use, that he only do residential. And then the third is a conservation, it's for the 25 foot, no disturb. I don't know, for example, 611 of your zoning bylaw is with your regard to materials removed and 30,000 square feet of material removed. He never, there's, there's no waiver from that. I can't imagine that this doesn't require that. But in any event, again, we only give out waivers that are requested. It's not our job to design the project. It's not our job to, you know, fill out the application and make sure that every waiver that's needed is there. He's only asked for these three. These are the only three that we can give. And so, we, what I did.
What's the practical effect of that? I mean, so.
He would have to come back for modifications.
Before he gets a building permit?
Yeah. Or he would have to comply with the zoning bylaw.
Which means he can't take more than 30,000 without a permit.
Without a special, he'd have to come for a special permit or get a waiver.
Right. The special permit that usually went to the planning board would come through us because it's a 40B.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
The planning board is a site plan approval for land clearing. So, they could get that permit, right?
They could.
He, he could. I mean, yeah, but he, he's not asking for a waiver from it. No, he's not. He's.
He's come through the planning board a couple times.
And he's also, he's not, he's not finished with conservation yet either. So, I mean, I think he's aways from a building permit. So, it, you know, it, it could be done. It, it's just unusual. I, like I said, I, I have, I've never encountered this before, so.
Have you notified Mass Housing of the issue?
So, I, I did, but I haven't heard back. And to be quite honest with you, I, I'm not sure that the person that I, that I contacted was. It was a very strange, when I called the number, it was, you've reached such and such a number. It didn't say the actual person's name. So, I want to make sure that, that I have. But in any event, I can, I can actually, I mean, I can tell you what Mass Housing's gonna say, which is that a P, a P E L was issued.
I, I didn't sit on this, but this is administrative hearing, so I'm just gonna give you my two cents.
Yeah.
Please do.
Why don't you, why don't you put a condition in there that fixes the problem?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I have.
Right.
I have one in here. It fixes it. So, one of the things that I couldn't figure out from the plans are that, and, and I went through the fire department comment letter. The, we usually put in a, a restriction on parking on internal driveways. It doesn't appear from the plan that there's any room to even park, except in the driveways. So, I'm not sure that, this is condition F2. I'm not sure we even need this condition, which says, you know, there shall be no parking on the internal roadways. Because it's little, it's literally, you go in and you come out. There's no.
What's it hurt to leave it?
There's, there's no meandering. So, we can, I think that what we'll do is we'll put no parking on the internal project roadway and leave it at that. Because the other one, it goes on to say only on one side. And then the permanent bounds along the 20, the 25 foot wetland buffer every 30 feet. I just didn't know if we should, because conservation is not done with their analysis, I didn't know if we should put in something we're saying unless conservation has a different idea, in, in better language. But unless conserva, you know, if conservation says you don't need bounds or you should put bounds every 10 feet, you know, let conservation be the ones that decide that.
I'm good with that.
Okay. And that's just so, that's just.
Unless otherwise conditioned by conservation.
Yes. Thank you.
Sounds good.
I was told that there's a party reviewing a stream on this, which is, they'll have to get through that hurdle of conservation anyway.
I think at this point, they have three reviewers of the stream, so, yes, and that's it. So, the other thing is that.
Do you have the 25,000?
The 25,000 is, that is something that we, that we put in on Harlow Brook with regard to the grading. And I just, I didn't know if, I, I, I didn't know if the, if the amount was, was correct for this project. And then I, as I thought about it after I sent it, I think it is. It's only in, it's only in escrow. It's not, and while this is smaller.
All we'd have to do is ask Freeman.
I'm sorry?
All we would have to do is ask Freeman whether that amount is enough.
And, and I, and we did, actually, for Harlow, when we did, in Harlow Brook, when we did the mediation. We, we brought, we brought him in. You know, Harlow Brook had a much longer roadway that went in. But again, when you're working in a tighter area, sometimes it's necessary to have this for stabilization. So, anyway, so I, I norm, I, I, after I thought about it, I wouldn't have highlighted that. I would have left that. So, I guess if there's no other comments, you guys can either, you can vote on this tonight, the three of you, or schedule a, a special Zoom before the 23rd to vote on it with Emmett and Judy.
We have a question that I don't know, might contain, but typically in 40Bs, you know, I become the guy who oversees this whole thing after we're all done here. We've had an alteration to the plan. Normally, in 40Bs that I've been dealing with so far, there can be minor changes to this. What I, I think might be noted here is that this, this reduction in height in a specific set of plans might actually be noted in this one.
Yes, we can, we can do that in. I mean, we have the most, yeah, we have the most recent plans listed. I did check that. They're the ones, they're the December 13th, 2023. But what we could put in here after A2, we can put, before A3, we can put that the plans were, plans were revised.
To reduce the height.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And then I, I can put that in more, better language, you know, with exactly how much was done. Okay. And so that's, that's what, um, so that would be what you guys need to figure out tonight if you want to, again, if you want to vote on this tonight, um.
We don't need a public hearing to vote on it.
No. So you could, um, you could also schedule a meeting. It could be by Zoom, whatever time the five of you are available, and we can do it then, but it has to be before the 23rd.
It just seems to me that the easiest thing is for you to fix the draft and then, and then people just vote it. Get on a conference call and be done with it.
Yeah. We can do that. We can, we'll talk to Emmett and Judy. Yeah.
So our next meeting date, did you say was the 25th?
25th, and this is the 23rd.
And this is the 20, and there's nothing on the 25th, right?
Right.
Yeah. So we'll just meet before the 23rd and be done with it.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. So I'll make these minor changes and then, um, we'll.
Do we have to notice right now or determine when that vote will take place?
Not necessarily, because this is administrative, so it's not really continued. But yeah, it has to be posted for, um, under the open meeting law, it has to be posted 48 hours ahead of time.
All right.
All right. Thank you for doing that.
Okay. Oh, no problem.
So I saw that we also had meeting minutes.
How many do we need to approve minutes?
Just a majority. Yeah. And, you know, realistically, somebody that's not at the, that wasn't at the meeting can vote on the meeting minutes, and they're just voting that the minutes are minutes, but it's better if they were there, so.
All right. That's gonna be a problem with some of these minutes.
Yeah. Um, October 12th, 2023, Philip Thorne, Tanya Trevazan, and Boris Goynich. I'll move to a problem.
Second.
I'm thirty.
Sounds like it's unanimous.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay.
Aye, aye, aye.
Oh, actually, um, October 26th, 2023, Wayne Dennison, Tanya Trevazan, and Boris Goynich.
I move to accept the minutes as drafted. All in favor? I'm Wayne.
Aye, Boris.
Perfect.
November 9th, 2023, Philip Thorne, Tanya Trevazan, and Boris Goynich.
Move to accept.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Boris.
And the last set, um, November 27th, 2023, Wayne Dennison, Philip Thorne, and Boris Goynich.
Move to accept as drafted.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Boris.
Move to adjourn. All in favor? Aye, we're done.
Aye.
Aye, Boris.
Great. Thanks, everybody.